Okay. All right, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Commissioner meeting. Today is August 6th, and I will call this meeting to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just real quick, Natasha, is that AC on?
Yes.
Okay.
All day.
All right. All right. Thank you. Okay. Well, we'll move into Section 2, Amendments and Approval of the Agenda.
I have one amendment to make. Item number 10, Elected Officials Update. I'd like to move that to before public comments, so we'll make that item number four.
Okay. Anything on your end?
No, I'm good.
Commissioner Coker?
Thank you.
Okay. Without any further, I will call the question.
Well, I'll make-
Or I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second?
Okay. Any further discussion? I'll call for the question. Commissioner Coker?
Aye.
Commissioner Hollinger?
Aye.
And aye as well. Okay. Next up, we have two presentations today. The first presentation is the solar project, and I believe Jeremy Skinner is here to present on behalf of Gold Beach Library. Hey, Jeremy. You're gonna want to grab that in kind of karaoke style. It should be on.
Okay. Shannon Souza is going to be joining us by Zoom. I'm Jeremy Skinner. I'm the library director for Curry Public Library District, which is the library that serves Gold Beach. And thank you for having us, for Shannon and I. Hi, Shannon.
Hi, Shannon. Can you hear us? She's got her cell phone mute.
You're there.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. I'm gonna do a real quick introduction, Shannon.
Okay.
So, at Curry Public Library, we've been working for a number of years. Our project started when our building was added on to, and with the, I believe it's 2% requirement by the state of Oregon to invest in renewable energy as a part of the project, we put some solar panels on the roof. It took us a while to do that, but we did that, and we have some battery backup, which takes care of roughly 7%, 8% of our power usage. And we were looking to expand that for a variety of reasons, and the project that we're working on right now would bring us to net zero, and it would also build in some disaster preparedness partnerships with the county and with the city. And I think with that, Shannon Souza is the proprietor of Soul Coast Consulting, and she's our project manager for this, and she knows a whole lot more about it than I do. So, Shannon.
Thank you, Jeremy. Would you like me to share my screen? I have the slides pulled up.
Yes, that'd be great, please.
Awesome. All right. All right, how are you looking here? You see?
That's good.
All right. Cool. Thanks a lot. My name is Shannon Souza. I've been practicing out of Coos Bay, my Coos Bay office, for about 30 years, and have the pleasure of enjoying a lot of time down in Curry County. I have been working with Jeremy and this group on the initial project and this follow-up. As just a little bit of context, I'm also serving on the Northwest Power Planning Council. This is important because we're served by Coos-Curry Electric Co-op down here, and Coos-Curry Electric Co-op receives its power from Bonneville Power Administration. They are overseen by the Northwest Power Planning Council, so I have the honor of serving on advisories for generating resources and fuels and systems. Oregon State is working on a state energy strategy. We will see recommendations to our legislators coming out this fall. Help us all keep our lights on, hopefully for some more local energy resilience, and I served on the Resilience Mitigation Advisory Council for former Governor Brown. And all of that spun out of a conversation that I enjoyed with your local Rotary Group and understanding just how exposed we are on the South Coast. So, real briefly, to level set for everyone out here, this map that you see with the dots and the lines, the lines are not rivers, they're actually transmission. The transmission line ends down at the end there. The dots that you see are energy generation. Note that we don't have any out on the coast. This little map over here is showing you all the generation we have over the West Coast at the United States. Not a lot happening in Oregon. This is from Bonneville Power Administration, again, who we receive our power from down on the South Coast. We've all been enjoying really low rates and reliable power, and Coos-Curry Electric Co-op has done a bang-up job of its part in keeping our lights on. The different lines that you see here are every year, Bonneville Power Administration updates its forecast for who they're gonna have to supply with the dams and the generating resources that they have. Everywhere the forecast gets larger. This is the most recent. We'll see another one come out this fall, and everyone expects that we're gonna see another dramatic increase. So, that's kind of the level setting for where we are down on the South Coast. This is the first time ever that Bonneville and the Northwest Power Planning Council is recognizing that these weather events that we're having, they're resulting in a much higher frequency of what we refer to in the energy sector of high-intensity, low-frequency events. We used to not plan for them because they were so low-frequency. We figure, oh, people at the end of the line will figure out how to take care of each other. They're increasing in frequency, longer durations, so let's plan for it. I've been very active in the policy sector for the last 15 years in this energy conversation because we are so susceptible to interruptions down on the South Coast and recognize that we could also bolster our economic diversity down here. Part of that conversation has been about how we allow communities to invest in their own resources. As a result of that conversation, four years ago, we passed legislation, we created a fund that would create access to plan for energy resilience projects and to develop those projects. This project that we're presenting on today was a successful awardee in a planning grant. As we were developing this legislation, I made sure that all of our coastal communities were eligible for a 0% match, whether they were going for planning or development, as long as it had a resilience factor. Resilience means you're not only generating the electricity, but you have somewhere to store it, and you're going through a process of understanding what are the community priorities for what you're gonna do with that energy when times get tight. As a result, we developed this initial list when we were applying for the planning grant. What are the priorities? We want to reduce the disruptions out of the library so the library can keep serving the community when they have little, tiny events. And we wanted to investigate, how could the library serve in a broader fashion to the broader community during longer unplanned utility outages? We wanted to minimize the expenses. Remember that previous slide that showed the costs of electricity? They're getting increasingly dynamic, and they're all going up. So, we wanted to see if we could create a system, as Jeremy said, it's net zero. We want to design it so it generates as much electricity as the library uses today in the course of a year and give it a little cushion, so if more people are charging their own devices at the library, they're still generating enough electricity. We want it to be a replicable proof of concept, and we wanted to see if we could provide some other benefits from the system. So, we received the planning grant funds, and as a result, we have gone through a 14-month process with deep engagement from the community and putting out invitations, encouraging folks to weigh in. As a result of that, what we have, you're looking at an aerial. If you're familiar with using the library, this is the path that you drive down. You come into the parking lot. This is a sloped lawn area. We identified that we needed about this much, so we needed this much area of solar panels to generate enough electricity for the library to be net zero. We're gonna produce as much electricity as we use over the course of the year. We associated that with a stack of batteries, so we can store that energy for various uses, which we'll get to shortly. And then we started thinking about what other uses these canopies could serve. This one, as you can see up at the top, is designed to create some rain cover or shade cover, as well as downlighting, for folks that are walking into the library along the sidewalk there. This middle canopy was designed as a gathering area. Folks are already gathering to have picnics there, so there's another kind of a shade area or a rain-covered area. Can also be enclosed if it's an extreme event and there is a need for outside community gathering that is enclosed. And this one is for covered parking for this first row of parking spots here. Roughly speaking, it's 100 kilowatts. If you're into kilowatts and solar, then you can get a gauge of what we're talking about. And we've kind of divided it up into three canopies, so if we're not successful in the full grant amount, we can kind of chunk off the pieces into thirds and still move forward with the project. Coos-Curry Electric Co-op is responsible for keeping our lights on, making sure all of the lines are tight. If there's a storm event, a transformer goes out, they're the ones that go out and make sure everything is taken care of. If the library is producing as much electricity as it uses in the course of a year, Coos-Curry Electric Co-op's existing net metering policy gives the library full credit for that. And under Coos-Curry Electric Co-op's existing policies, that was how they were receiving their income necessary for the O and M. So, we worked closely with them on this project to make sure that their bases were covered and that other ratepayers were not going to be injured by paying for services that the library was not paying for. So, they have developed a policy to accommodate projects like this while making sure the library is still paying its fair share to help with those maintenance, unplanned maintenance or planned maintenance of the delivery system. These two graphs are showing you kind of why that matters. This upper graph shows you over the course of a year. We start over here in January. It's cooled out. The heater is always on. Library is using more electricity. Summertime, it's cooler, it's more moderate, not so much, but down here is when the solar is generating, and they don't really match up. So, that's where the importance of the CCEC net metering policy comes into play. These are just some high-level looks at what those three different arrays look like. The parking canopy down low, the gathering space in the middle, and up top, a covered walkway. All of them are designed with gutters on the edge to collect the rainwater that would have otherwise fallen onto the grass. They're also designed with downlighting underneath so that we can provide more safety lighting or just fun lighting and illumination if that's desired, but also reduce some of the dark sky impacts. Energy storage system priorities. We want to save money. We want to reduce the wear and tear on CCEC's system. When everyone turns on all of their appliances at once, it's very hard on their system. So, if we have energy batteries, storage batteries there, we can use those to reduce those peaks for CCEC's grid, and that also results in lower energy costs for the library because they aren't demanding that peak. During outages that are extended and for longer periods of time, we're planning for three weeks of readiness out on the coast, which is a week more than the rest of the state. We're planning for six months of readiness in the event of a seismic, a 9.0 seismic event. So, we did some thought and got a lot of input about what those priorities are, and this is just a list of what you see. What would those priorities be for those batteries to serve, both inside the library, if it's a command center for emergency responders now, and if outside, people aren't using the library like they usually would? We want them to be able to charge their phones so they can communicate with others, get information with others, have some lighting, maybe throw some tarps around the side. And there is a potential for restricted access electric vehicle charging that would likely be for public vehicles that are specifically dedicated to supplying services to the area. As you know, we receive a lot of rain in a very short amount of time, and where the library is positioned, it's really receiving all of that rain and trying to manage it. Right now, where those solar canopies are, at least the two upper ones, there's lawn there that can catch some of that rainfall, and some of the rain can get into the ground, but pretty quickly it hits a hard pan, and it just flows right out on to the rest of the drainage system, which is the parking lot. So, we heard during our community events that there was an interest in investigating how these systems could actually improve the rainwater situation at the library. So, we designed these canopies for gutters at the bottom edge of each of them, which can then direct the rain that they catch into bioswales or rain gardens. This is a preliminary concept for what bioswales might look like that could be installed at the same time that we're putting in the footings for the canopies. We've included the costs. We are including the costs for that development and integration of the bioswales to improve the rainwater situation, stormwater management situation, at the same time we're developing the solar project. Now, we're getting to the development piece. There's $12 million left. At the beginning of this, in 2021, we had $50 million that was set aside for this program that Department of Energy at our state, not U.S., administers. Right now, we're down to $12 million. We have a funding opportunity that has opened. This project is very well poised to receive development funds. However, the award of development funds is highly, highly, highly competitive, and very much it's going to come down to, if all of these projects are equally technically competent, and we are presenting a very technically competent project, we anticipate that others will as well. It's going to come down to, how much does the community want it? How much were they involved in shaping of the project, and how many others are saying, yeah, we think this is a good idea? This says that we need applications to be completed by August 15th, and we're looking for letters of support there. We can just pretend that that date hasn't changed because we'd love to really expedite this, and if this is ringing a chord with you, we would love to see county commissioners support this project. We would love to see just public, members of the public, support this project. The intake period has been extended a month, so now we have until September 15th. We have developed some sample letters of support for folks that are interested in providing them. Jeremy can let you know how to access them, or I can email them out to you, but we really do want to get those underway. I'm gonna skip this because this program was not extended last legislative section, and I'll close it with my contact info and open it up for any questions.
Well, thank you, Shannon. That's very informative and exciting for the library. I know you've been working on this quite a bit, Jeremy, for quite a while, and, you know, I wonder, did you bring any of those templates for support letters with you?
I don't have them with me, but I'll email them tonight or tomorrow morning.
That would be great. That would be great. And is there a place where the public can make them accessible so that they can maybe fill some out and get them returned in? That would be also, I think, beneficial.
I can post that to at least social media. Probably the easiest for me to do would be to-
Okay.
-post the link to Library Facebook.
Okay. Perfect.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had another question. In doing this project, and maybe I've misinterpreted, but our emergency services, emergency management director said that maybe possibly as part of this program, being able to utilize the library as an emergency management hub, is that true, or did I hear that differently from somewhere?
Do you want me to field that, Shannon, or do you?
Yeah, I'm so excited about this part. So, I'll start, and Jeremy, if I miss anything, please weigh in, but absolutely, the idea is for extended outages, or if, for whatever reason, your emergency response offices are not available, now you have the library as a default command center. We've been thinking about the battery storage during those events so that we can provide the emergency responders with the facility and everything they need, the illumination, the communications. There's a community kitchen in there, so, you know, whatever level they decide that they can serve their own internal needs and then extend that community kitchen service to external. That is also why we have included device charging, personal device charging outside in the canopies. If it is the case that the library needs to become a command center and it's not appropriate for general public to be using the space, we were very thoughtful, or your community members that advised us in this project were very thoughtful in how they would like to use those canopies and the electricity that's available so that the broader community can still charge up their phones, communicate with grandma, make sure everything's okay, and with each other.
Perfect.
And my follow-up would be that if this were to happen in December, some kind of an event like this, those batteries can also be charged with diesel. So, the nice thing is, is that even if we don't have Peak Sun to keep us running at that high level, we do have the ability to bring diesel in and keep those topped off and charged.
Perfect.
Okay.
Well, that was gonna be kind of my next question is, you know, the backup generator, but if you've got diesel being able to help feed it, then-
We don't have the diesel. I mean, we, you know, we might down the road, but it would be sort of in partnership probably with any of the stakeholders that would be using it, that, you know, if you guys have stored generators that you can haul in-
Yeah.
-that would be a part of that response.
Got it.
Okay.
Sure. Well, I think it's an incredible addition to an already amazing facility, so-
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, and if you guys don't know Jeremy, Jeremy is the director at the Gold Beach Library here and has been for a long time, and from personal experience and speaking for my wife and kids who attend the library almost on a daily basis, they do a great job over there, and their facilities are fantastic, not only from just being able to go in and check out books, but the technology that they have there to be able to utilize, and also for creative crafts as well, laser etching machines and et cetera, and it's all available to the public here. So, good job.
Thank you.
We're proud of what you do there at the library.
Thank you guys for taking the time today. We really appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Awesome. I will post information, and if you have any other questions, reach out to me.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay. Next up, we have a presentation from our fire marshal, an update. Aubrey, are you out there?
Here.
There you are. Come on in. Take the shortcut.
I'm gonna allow Mike to-
Yeah, come on in.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and thank you very much for coming in. You guys-
Thanks for inviting me. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. You've been traveling for a bit, and we appreciate having you here. You've got, I wanted to say a hot topic, but that would have drawn criticism.
Well, I wasn't prepared or aware of any hot topics, but my main goal today was to introduce myself, explain what we can do for you. So, Aubrey and I both have different positions. So, my name is Mike Cook. I'm the Regional Mobilization Coordinator for Oregon State Fire Marshal. I cover Jackson County, Josephine County, Curry County, Coos County, and then I assist with Douglas, Lainland, and Benton, and Klamath and Lake. And so, my job, my main duties, well, let me kind of start with, I'm kind of proud to be able to come back. I grew up in Merlin, Oregon, and I spent a large amount of my time between Charleston and Brookings fishing with my grandparents, so it's nice to finally be back over here planning on doing some fishing. But my job is to help out the local, the local fire departments when they are, do not have enough resources. And Oregon State Fire Marshal is an all-hazards agency, so, meaning we not only do hazmat, we also assist with wildfire, which tends to be the majority of our job the last couple of years. But the most recent tsunami warning, I was on the phone with all the fire defense board chiefs checking to find out what resources they may need. We had trigger points in case something was needed, so we'd be able to come down and help the Curry community. So, the way that it would work is if we would get an emergency, my position is to be contacted by the local fire defense board chief.
Real quick, I think the folks in the hallway are having a hard time hearing you, so you may want to just grab that microphone and kind of just-
Can you guys hear me out there now?
That's better. Yeah, there you go.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Normally, they don't hand me a mic, so-
[laughing]
So, the way that the Oregon Mo Plan works is the local chief, the local fire department would be overwhelmed with an event such as a wildfire that is threatening 50 structures. And so, the local chief of the fire defense would call the fire defense board chief, which would call me. I would probably already be on top of it and heading this way. I would ask how many houses, what resources do they need. We would move it up the state. The state fire marshal would go ahead and contact the governor and sign an emergency declaration, and we would immediately go ahead and start sending task forces down to this area to help protect for the wildfire, for hazmat, or, as I said most recently, the tsunami. And so, that's the role of the regional mobilization coordinator, is to help locally. Now, here in Curry County, anything outside of the fire districts, the county commissioners have the delegation of authority. So, in the event that we have a fire and working with CFPA and the county commissioners, and it's deemed that state resources are needed to assist to protect structures, I would be working with you all, excuse me, and we would go ahead and work on a declaration, find out what you need, and we'd get it down here as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And so, my main job is I work for you. I work for the communities of Curry, Coos, Jackson, and Josephine, and I do that working through the local fire defense board chiefs and the local chiefs. You're very fortunate here in Curry. You have what I consider to be one of the best chiefs on the coast, with Chief Krieger here in Gold Hill. I've been working with him.
He's here too, so I see him back there.
Yep, chief's back there.
Chief is phenomenal.
He does a great job.
Yep.
Come on in.
And so, he's been working really closely with me. One of the things that we do is we maintain the task forces throughout the state, and right now, we have 16 task forces available and ready to go throughout the state, and that's five trucks per task force. And Curry County, for one of the first times ever, chief has put it together with Curry and Coos, and so Curry and Coos County are gonna be able to help support those task forces statewide, so great kudos to Chief Krieger.
Good. Could you talk a bit about the capability of that task force, just so, in layman's language, so we can understand what it is?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. So, it depends upon what is asked for. So, once again, my job is to ask the local chief what resources he or she might need. And so, in the event of some of the local wildfires, we've needed, what, type 6 and type 3 trucks. So, kind of a type 6 is a pickup truck size, and a type 3 is a little bit larger that can help protect structures. can help protect structures. It's not quite as mobile. And so we would order up a task force of, say, two of the type threes, a big truck, and two of the smaller trucks, and then one tender, so it has water. And then we'd bring them down, and then talk into the local fire chief. They would assign, or tell us where they would like to have those assigned to protect those structures. And so it all depends. We have task forces we can send down that might be all type ones. So those would be all the big fire engines you normally see. So maybe if there was a large commercial building or a large commercial area to where type ones were needed, maybe if it was more mobile, they might send type sixes or pickup trucks. So it all depends on what the needs are of the local chief as to what we may be able to bring.
And our chief of fire here is for Gold Beach, or is he speaking on behalf of the incorporated areas? Who's he gonna dial for help on whose behalf?
Chief, you want to talk on that, or you want me to?
So, and around the state, all the different air regions have what they call a Fire Defense Board. So the Fire Defense Board...
Chief, can you...
Group of the chiefs that have been elected by that group, we have him here, Don Kendall, which was a former Emergency Services Coordinator here in Curry County. He is, at this time, he is our Fire Defense Board Chief. I'm the first alternate for that. And then the second alternate is Adam Broughton, which is Chief of OFER Fire Department. So if we have, we have a series, so whoever's at the top of the food chain that's here, if Don leaves, then I would take care of that. A lot of the mobilization stuff that Mr. Cook was talking about, I take care of that stuff now. But if we have something, we are, as a Fire Defense Board, we're looking out for the whole county. So basically, everything from the Winchuck to Langlois. So we'll take, and Agnes. So we would take care of that. If we have something that goes on here, that individual chief of Brookings or Port Orford or wherever, they'll contact us. We'll work through Mike to get everything going and figure out what resources that we need. So that's pretty much how it's set up around the whole state.
Very good.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. So in, for the Regional Mobilization Coordinators, there's only six of us across the state that covers that. And so my previous life, I'm a retired fire chief for Chillicothe Fire. I did that for the last 10 years, and I've been doing public service for about 40 years. So getting to work with somebody like Chief Krieger and Chief Kendall is phenomenal. So I really appreciate the opportunity. Are there any questions for me, or any further questions?
No, I appreciate you coming in and informing everyone and introducing yourself.
Yeah, I got a statement just to make. You know, I attended the fair parade, and it was, you know, I heard many people comment how many emergency service vehicles we have in just our local fire district here. Gold Beach represented with probably a mile-long line of fire trucks and emergency vehicles, followed by OFER, followed by, all of them, really. So it was just great to see. And so having that, that force here is really, you know, it gives me a lot of optimism that, you know, if something starts, their response time is quick and they can knock it out pretty quick. So I liked seeing all that.
I've got to work around a lot of counties around the state, and I will tell you that Curry County is very fortunate. You have great people here, doing great things. CFPA is a phenomenal organization. Gold Beach, OFER, Brookings, you have a lot of great people doing great things. So I enjoy working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, I would, I want to add an appendix to your comments here, because we wanted you to come down and help us understand that we're on the path to readiness as we look forward to the weeks to come in terms of the fire season approaching. So our emergency services manager was going to be here tonight because he wanted to remind everybody, based on the kind of good picture you show about the professionals, that our neighbors also have an obligation, and that is to be aware and be prepared. And that means, for many of us, that means that you have the ability to get off of your property and to evacuate in the most extreme cases, but that you also have defensible spaces, defensible gear that can help you should something really untoward happen. And now's the time to do it, not in September. He would encourage us as best he could to step up and get that done now. So, thank you.
Commissioner, that is a great point, and something I forgot to add earlier. So I am the Regional Mobilization Coordinator that helps with the resources. My partner here, Aubrey, Aubrey Kraus, he's actually the Fire Marshal that helps with the code enforcement and other items. But we also have Kelsey, which Aubrey will go over, that is helping. So we actually have a three-pronged attack now from State Fire Marshal, in the fact that we do resources for current emergencies, we do prevention and code enforcement with the Fire Marshals, and then we also do prevention and education with the fuels mitigation specialist. So there's three of us out here in the field, and you are welcome to contact me at any time if you have any more questions, and I'll come on down and visit with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I talk loud. Hi, I'm Aubrey Kraus. I'm the Deputy State Fire Marshal for Curry County. It's nice to finally make face. I know I've met Jay, but I haven't met everybody else, so. I have a lot that comes with my position. I've been a firefighter, I say, my whole life, since I was 16, and a firefighter, paramedic in a city, and now I do mostly fire investigations and fire inspections. I do do defensible space assessments for the county. I was covering Coos and Curry County, so I was kind of stretched thin, but now I'm just in Curry County. So, yes, defensible space is a huge thing for us. Our lane in that is we're trying to make, I only have authority to do inspections within commercial buildings. They would like for us deputies to have some code enforcement for woo-y areas and problematic areas that could become, you know, a bigger hazard. So I go around and I do recommendations right now, where we create an assessment, we go to your property, and we tell you how to create the space around your structure, where to start, what the ideal spacing is. Sometimes you can't do it because of neighboring properties. So there's a lot that comes with it. It's a free thing. If you guys want to apply online, you can even personally call me, and I can come out and perform the assessment. As far as commercial settings, that has to do with business owners and everything. We go in, we inspect, and make sure that everything's meeting fire code. Investigations, I get called by the authority having jurisdiction if they get a fire and they'd like me to investigate it. So it's pretty much the gist of it. It's a lot, but it sounds like a little. And I'm here for questions. I'm your Fire Marshal for the county. I'm the only one here. There's never really been one from the state. It's a really cool position, because Curry County has only ever been covered by Salem area, Grants Pass area, so having one here is a huge step for our agency. Having RMCs, having Kelsey, it's great. It shows that we're really making waves. We actually now have a regional deputy state Fire Marshal, so if I'm out of town, I have an immediate backup. The response time for investigations used to be three, four, five hours, two, if you're lucky. So being able to respond so quickly is another great thing for the community. And fire inspections have never occurred here, so that's been, that's been the thing that I've been doing a lot of. But it makes the community safer, and I enjoy doing it and getting to meet people. And so if you guys ever need me, I'm here, and now you get to see my face. A lot of people didn't know we had a Fire Marshal.
Well, now we do.
Yeah, you do.
Now we do.
So Aubrey, in your role relatively new during the inspections, what have you learned about Curry County in terms of the kind of direction that we provide for both our commercial owners as well as our residential owners? What would you have us change if there was anything that we need to draw our attention to?
I think this would entail different meetings with different people. I spoke with Miranda. I think, if I'm being honest, my biggest issue is you have people who own a business, and they lease it out to someone, and they just move in, and they put whatever kind of occupancy in there. My, I live in the world of occupancy types, because that's where we create maintenance inspections. I work very closely with the building official when a new location's opening up, and then I maintain what they've required from the beginning. And things have been missed here because there hasn't been a Fire Marshal. Education's huge. Like, what I'm doing right now, for the most part, is trying to go out and do an annual inspection and educate the business owner on a lot of things that they didn't know. So a big component, I would say, is education. If you guys have questions, any business owners, any local agencies, call me. It's what I'm here for. The requirements I'm trying to work towards later down the line, but where I feel like, I feel like maybe speaking with Miranda when it comes to your getting a business license to have a conversation with myself or the building official, Garrett, and say, hey, look, this is what I'm going to put in this specific location. What are your thoughts? What am I looking at? A perfect example would be like, somebody wanting to open a restaurant. Say, hey, Aubrey, I'm going to be cooking this menu, I'm going to have this on there. And I could have the conversation, that's probably not the best location to move into. You probably want to go into a location that has a type one hood, stuff like that. Education is a huge component. So I think in the initial process of opening a business, if you will, having a checklist of what they might be putting in there to better help them understand what's a good location to create a year lease in, that they're going to get, the Fire Marshal come in and be like, yeah, you can't do that here, because it's expensive, and it's a problem, and it's a hazard. So I think in the initial, I'm going to get this business conversation with, I guess it would be what, planning would be the people...
Could be, yeah. Depends on what stage you're in.
Yeah, and that's what I'm here for. I think it's now just knowing that I exist and having the conversations, talking about it, and to slowly change the process so we don't run into that as much.
So I'm hearing her say that in our permitting and review process, that you, there are opportunities to bring you in, and both for education purposes, but also possibly to move further down the pipeline and even do inspections relative to what's happening with those properties as well.
Yeah, so I came from a really big city. The process worked fantastic. What we would do is if you were going to open a business, you would go to the city and the building department and apply for what you were opening. And you couldn't open or get your certificate of occupancy until you had a fire inspection, just so that it met all that.
Yeah.
And that can come from the authority having jurisdiction, where the city decides or the counties decide. It's a little easier within a city municipality versus, you know, covering the whole outskirts of the county.
Yeah.
So that might be the education.
And we have some processes we need to put in place.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I'm here just to bounce off of. Like, if you guys, I can't tell you by all means how to do it, but I'm definitely here to give you that education component, to say, look, this is what I'm looking for when I go in.
Okay, so let me just ask the chief. Chief, to what extent are you involved, side by side with her, or how does that work, especially when it comes to our people here trying to deal with our clients?
Yeah, so inside the city, I do inspections with her pretty frequently. Because of my other business, I usually stay out of food trucks, I stay out of restaurants, just so there's no cross-contamination of interest there.
Thank you.
I think that was assault. Just so that there's no cross-contamination of issues with the business. But we work with them a lot. We haven't had that opportunity to pass, in the past. We've had a lot of catch-up to do in restaurants, a lot of catch-up to do with mobile food units, and with hotels. That's been kind of our big thing. And lately, County with fluorescent lights, interestingly enough. So those are the things we've been working with them the most, trying to go through those processes. And we did discuss a little bit of this preemptive strike on when you're moving in, because we've had people that have moved into places and turned a garage at a facility into a fabrication shop when it should not be, or a restaurant, something like that.
Huge things around here.
Sure.
And I think that's alleviated in that process, like, hey, I'm going to, and it will happen. You will get people who move into these locations because they just don't know, or because they think they can slip through. That'll happen too, but I think to alleviate some of it, it would be the initial process to have a conversation with what they would like to put into that location.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for the information and the introduction. Appreciate it.
Mike looks forward to working with you.
Yes.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Next on the agenda is elected comments, and I had asked the county clerk, if she's still available, I asked the county clerk to come in. There was some, there was some conversation online that, in our last meeting, we may or may not have violated some rules. So I asked her to look into this, and she will tell us what she found.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. You may have to speak up, though. Your voice is really soft.
Yes. I can yell.
[laughing]
So, yeah, elected officials are, don't have to follow the same restrictions for political activity as public employees do. So public employees may not discuss their views while on working time.
I can't hear you. Just have to speak up, Shannon. Please.
So I guess the question is, was there any wrongdoing from the last meeting?
No.
Okay. Thank you. And there was also some discussion about the fact that on the recall sheets, you had stamped that they were received, and somehow that validated their authenticity or their truthfulness? Is there any validity to that?
No. The only thing that the clerk is responsible for when a petition comes in is counting the words to see that it's the 200 words, but we do not read it. We do not look into fact-finding. That's the responsibility of the petitioners.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying all of that. I know there was a lot of people who were making discussions about that, so thank you for taking the time out of your day to come in and do that and look into that.
Yeah.
And I know you reached out to the Secretary of State too, to discuss that, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
I saw Mayor Hodges walking around. Mayor, would you, would you like to take time in the elected updates?
I'd love it.
You will have to grab the microphone, because it, you literally have to go like this so anybody can hear you.
You hear me?
Yes. It's on.
Okay. All right. I brought a little something here.
And it's not a paper airplane.
Well, now I needed my thoughts in front of me. So, yeah, thank you for giving me a moment up here to speak. I appreciate it. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to hear a lot of what's already been said, so if I'm repetitive, I apologize.
Nothing has been said. We had a couple of presentations.
Yeah. And then I don't know what. You just had a speaker up here, so...
Oh, the clerk.
Okay. All right, cool. So, so I am the mayor of Brookings, and I'm proud to be the mayor of Brookings, and, but I'm, to be clear, up here, I'm speaking on my own behalf, not as representative of the citizens of Brookings. So I don't want to take up a lot of time here tonight, but I want to address the petitions for the recall of the county commissioners, Commissioner Tross and Commissioner Hollander. And in that, I just want to be clear, I do not support the recall of either commissioner. And in addition, truly, I find the petitions for the recall of the county commissioners, both Jay Tross and Patrick Hollander themselves extremely subjective, and the accusations are soft and they're empty, in my view, of any substantive support. So for example, the repeated calls for transparency, accountability, and action in Commissioner Tross recall, and that petition itself, that is really shocking to me. These are the commissioners, of course, Commissioner Tross, one of them, who brought in third-party experts in whatever field needed, be it financial, legal, or even IT, et cetera, in order to be transparent, to be accountable, and to take proper action. And by the way, when they did this, what were they met with by a few, which was complaints about the cost, as well as the outright refusal from non-cooperative departments to provide data that was requested? I hear about a lot of talk of waste of money for these third-party experts that were brought in, but I would also say there's a lot of wasted money due to extra time from non-cooperation, and then now the cost of this recall. What I see here in this county is commissioners willing to have tough conversations. We find the county leadership willing to step out and publicly face the reality of the situation, to tell the county its true financial position, and then let us vote on it, which we have done as citizens of the county. You guys could have taken the easy road and stayed status quo, kicked the can down the road, as has been done. But you guys were transparent and accountable and bringing these things forward publicly. There are soft accusations in these petitions, such as holding meetings mainly in Brookings with little to public notice, and then inconsistency, my words, in how those meetings are held. I just say in a petition like this, we need to get to the facts. Are the commissioners abiding by the rules that are set in place or not? If there is a law broken, the petition needs to be detailed. Time, place, what laws were broken? And there's a process for making complaints if, in fact, those laws were broken. But just because you feel that someone or something is unfair and you don't like it, it doesn't mean it's illegal, and it most definitely does not call for a recall. call for a recall. We don't have to agree with the tone or the personality of these commissioners. They are here to be commissioners, not our friends. What they should do in the position they're in is work for the betterment of our county and the way it operates. And in my opinion, that is what you have done to the best of your ability, especially given all the barriers that you guys have encountered. All too often, you guys attempt to have a public dialogue to address very difficult issues, but you're met with accusations, personal vendettas, or sometimes the other party of a two-party dialogue doesn't even show up. In the end, I believe a person or group that shoots down ideas and never presents one of their own is a weak person or a weak party. While it is a safe option, it is a weak option. If you don't present options, you have nothing to defend. You can get some like-minded people together to throw accusations and mock those who are courageous enough to stand up and speak their ideas, but that's not true leadership. What these commissioners are doing takes courage. That is true leadership. In closing, I've lived in this county my entire life. I love this county. I want nothing but what is best for this county. And in a time like this, that takes strong and courageous leadership. And I believe that's what we have here. I hope that all of you here, everyone watching, truly look at the facts, look at the objective truth, not base anything on subjective opinions. And when you do, you will see what I see, which is strong leadership. And hopefully you will do what I do, which is support our commissioners. So that's what I wanted to say tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will, I believe there's no others in the elected roles. We will move into the public comment portion of this meeting. And I just want to read this disclaimer. The public comment section of the agenda is an item designated for any member of the public who wishes to speak on any issue related to Curry County. Please be advised that the comments that are made by these individuals reflect their personal opinions and have not been verified factually. Comments directed towards county personnel will not be tolerated in this forum. We encourage anyone with personnel-related concerns to address them privately with any of us after the meeting. Now, obviously, if you'd like to speak about us, elected officials, that you can. We ask that you don't speak about the employees. And if you do, like I said, you can meet with me afterwards and I'll take those concerns. I will also offer this. There's a lot of public speaker slips tonight. And I really appreciate the community dialogue. I will ask that everybody please be respectful of the speakers regardless if they agree with your stance or not. Okay? It is their opportunity and their three minutes. Okay, so it is three minutes. We will ask that you try to stay within that parameter. If you begin to go over, I will try to guide you to closing your comments as this is, as you can. Okay, so first up is Dave Gardner.
Good evening. My name is Dave Gardner.
You may with it. There you go. There you go.
Dave Gardner. And I worked for the Curry County Sheriff's Office for 32, 34 years. Law enforcement, 37 and a half. Worked for seven sheriffs. So what I'm here today about is, I'll talk about public trust. Let me go back to about 2007, when one of our deputies had a medical procedure. He was on light duty. He was going through arrest records. And he came across with the card and it had a picture of an individual on it and a name. He showed it to me and a couple of other employees. And that person was John Ward. John Ward had been arrested in Curry County for being AWOL, A W L, Absent Without Leave from the Navy. So we all kind of like looked at that in amazement. You know, I've arrested probably five people in Curry County for being AWOL. One of those people, I can't say that it was John, looked a lot like John. Okay? So fast forward, 2017, I retired from the sheriff's office. And just before I did that, I was told through rumor mill that I was going to be demoted and put back on the road. And I was the only detective at that time. And so I went to the sheriff because there's this kind of chain of command thing that kind of works only one way, especially in smaller agencies. And I went to the sheriff and confronted him about that. And he said, well, I thought Sergeant Inslee was going to tell you that. And so he said, yeah, we're eliminating the detective position. We're going to put you back on the road. So I thought about that for a little bit. And I remember that little nugget I had. And I confronted him. I said, you were in the military, weren't you? He said, yeah. I said, the Navy, right? Yeah. And I'm looking up on his office wall. He's got like three or four hats. And I said, so you were arrested for being AWOL? No, I wasn't. It was his reply. And I said, yeah, you were. He goes, no. Like three or four times denied that he had ever been arrested in Curry County. Finally, he said, well, I turned myself in. So when you're AWOL in the military, as I understand it, you don't get, there's no matrix system. We didn't have a matrix system back then like we do now. And so he finally admitted and said, well, I turned myself in. I said, well, it's still an arrest. I don't care what you call it. You were arrested in Curry County for a military charge of essentially desertion from your post. And I basically ended my day that day, I think it was on a Monday, and told him I was going to contemplate the rest of my employment with the county. And that was like June, end of June of 2017. And I retired a week or so later from the sheriff's office for the second time. So I'm talking about public trust. I mean, here we have a man who lied about that. There's been, he couldn't even tell me the truth, looking me right in the face. He had to make up some excuse. And I know that there's been other accusations made against him over the years. I worked for seven sheriffs, including him. And so, you know, the public needs to know about this individual, what he's capable of doing or not doing, saying or not saying. And there, you know, I have, I'm going to be transparent. I have no use for the man. I don't like him. I think he's dishonest. And that's my own opinion. And I'll keep it at that.
I'm going to ask you to, if you, are you finished? Are you?
I'm done.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Can you give me a hand around?
Yeah.
Hand around?
It's up to you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dave. Next up, Brett Curtis.
Good evening, commissioners. Everybody hear me? My name's Brett Curtis.
I know you know how to DJ, so you can.
I live in Curry County. I'm a registered voter, a resident of Brookings. Here quickly, really for a couple or three reasons. One, as a show of support and to stand by my friend Jay. You mean a lot to me. I've known you for many, many years. I find you to be very upstanding, compassionate, thoughtful. If we're, if we're just categorizing men, you're a very good listener. A man of character. And as I read that petition with you, actually, I couldn't, nothing in that resonated as the person that I know. So I encourage anyone who thinks otherwise to spend some time with Jay, get to know him. Because the man I know wasn't reflected in that petition. Another matter I would love to share while I have the podium, is I would encourage all three of you and the sheriff to do everything possible to communicate with one another. Turn every stone over. Look for every opportunity to break bread, to walk into another gentleman's room and say, can I shut the door behind me? We got, we have to talk about. I really want to encourage more dialogue. And I think we all know that you can't get something from nothing. So there must be something that the four of you can build on. And I encourage that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while you have a minute, I do want to acknowledge that this weekend Brett and Marie Curtis and their whole RE/MAX team and Natasha and the, that put together quite, yeah, many people, yes. Yes, put together an incredible event for a local cause, in Caitlin's Cause, that raised just a tremendous amount of money. And so thank you for selflessly always giving to the community.
Well, we're happy to. But it does, it does take quite a village to do it all. So and thank you to you and Keith and many other people. We'll announce what we're giving to Caitlin's Cause probably at the end of the week. It will be substantial. And it's really because of the village coming together.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Sienna Worthy. So for some of you, this may be the first time that you've come to the podium to publicly speak. We ask that you state your name and where you live. And you're going to want to grab that microphone. Yes, you know that.
Hi, everyone. My name's Sienna. I live in Brookings. And I'm here to share a little bit about the most influential mentor in my life. I've known Joe for nearly a decade. We first met when I was in high school. I kicked for the football team and he was on the coaching staff. I was immediately drawn to his leadership style. Fair, but compassionate, focused, and encouraging. Our story didn't end on the field. As I entered college, I had the privilege of actually working under Jay in a management role, where he became not just a boss to me, but a mentor, who believed in me, challenged me, and genuinely helped shape my approach to leadership and to life. Now, as an adult who was lucky enough to come back to my hometown, I continue to value watching Jay's commitment to being a part of the change that this place I love so desperately needs. Jay is someone who's dedicated his life to public service. He speaks up for those who can't or won't speak for themselves. He fights for children to have the opportunities they deserve, supports families in need, and encourages everyone to believe in their power to make a difference. He leads with integrity and intention. And I personally believe that never shying away from the hard conversations and making the tough decisions are the ways in which Jay challenges everyone around him to be the best versions of themselves. Jay's unafraid to challenge the status quo. He's definitely known for going against the grain. And he's made a name for himself as a person who will call for honesty and transparency in situations that haven't had such requirements in the past. What makes Jay stand out is his ability to see the potential in people, in systems, in entities, and in communities. He doesn't settle for the way things have always been done. That's not good enough. He asks tough questions, expects accountability, and inspires those around him to be the best versions. I saw this firsthand as one of his employees and later as a leader of a team myself. His impact on Curry County is far-reaching and often unrecognized. Because he's not in it for the credit, he's actually in it for the change. Joe instilled me, Sienna, we determine our own capacity to deal with hard things. And as we do them, that capacity grows. Closing your eyes doesn't provide solutions. That's called ignorance. That single piece of advice has shaped the way I approach challenges, leadership, and most importantly, life. It's a mindset of resilience and action, two qualities Jay embodies himself every day. Jay's a natural mentor, a leader, and a man who's influenced the lives of every person who's lucky enough to know him. This is why I would ask all of you to think about the way things in Curry County have always been done. Change is hard, but asking things of people who are not in the habit of doing them feels like one of Jay's superpowers to me. He's a problem solver, blessed with a unique ability to identify areas of concern and begin coming up with new ways to make a difference, usually for the better. I've only ever observed Jay acting out of intention and having the best interest of his community and his people at heart. I aspire to create even a fraction of the impact he has on this community. And I truly believe his reputation and the results speak for themselves. I would encourage all of you, the citizens and taxpayers of Curry County, to inform yourselves. Equip yourselves with the accurate facts surrounding who Jay is and what he's trying to accomplish here. Facebook tells no whole truths, and I just want everyone to be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sienna. Next, Emma Kaskenny.
Hi, guys. My name's Emma Kaskenny, and I've lived in Brookings since 2013. I have had the pleasure of knowing Jay for the past eight years. And he's had a huge impact on me. I wrote my thoughts down so I can get them out. Here we go. Alright, I've lived here since 2013. My daughter goes to school here. And just like you, I'm a person who cares. It's both an honor and a privilege to be able to speak on Jay's behalf. In the past eight years, he's been both a county commissioner and a small business owner. Jay is a rare kind of leader, one whose actions speak louder than words and whose values remain constant no matter the setting. For nearly a decade, I've worked under Jay's leadership. And I can say without hesitation that he leads with integrity, humility, and a deep belief in doing the right thing, not just because it's easy, but because when it's hard, but not just when it's easy, but especially when it's hard. I've seen him make tough calls without seeking credit. He puts in long hours without complaint, and he treats every person, no matter their role or background, with fairness and respect. Jay doesn't lead from above. He leads from beside you, and he shows up. He listens, and most importantly, he acts with the good of others in mind. Beyond his professional roles, Jay is deeply embedded in the fabric of our community. He's an active member of the PTA. He's previously on the board of the Humane Society. He's a dedicated coach to a local softball girls team who just kicked butt, by the way. He's helped shape the next generation, and not just through policy, but through presence. He's there for people, and he stands up for what he believes in on a regular basis. He teaches by example, and he inspires by showing up. The same care that he extends in all of the things he does extends to the 45 Curry County residents who work under his guidance alongside me in Brookings, Oregon. And they, like me, consider him the best boss they've ever had. Jay sees people, all people. He sees young workers who get their start, middle-aged professionals juggling many different responsibilities, and seniors who've gone out of their way to be part of this community. He values each voice, even the ones who don't say the things as he does. And he brings people together to find solutions to problems in ways that are innovative and fair for everyone. Despite the acts of the petitioners for recall to throw his name in the dirt, Jay remains grounded. He doesn't cut corners. He doesn't back down. And he doesn't chase popularity. He stands for what is right, even when he faces challenging opposition. He's a man of passion and true substance. He simply does the work, the hard work, that others are shying away from right now, with fairness, consistency, and heart. Jay is the kind of leader communities hope for. He's the kind of leader that we deserve. I know because I've witnessed it every single day with my own two eyes. I've been on the front lines of seeing his impact on our community. And it is so very well-respected and trusted by it. We're all losing as long as we waste our time on this recall. This is a waste of our time, our energy, and what we could be doing. The accusation and wrongdoing is off-base and unsubstantiated. The word of the complaints against our commissioners is the voice of people who aren't willing to look outside of themselves and for the better good of the whole team. I hope that you will think about this. And I hope that you will use your brain and your heart and do what's right.
Thank you, Emma.
Thank you.
Next up, Ronnie Kruger.
I knew you were going to do that. Hi, my name is Ronnie Kruger. I live in Brookings. I too have known Jay for eight years, eight years. It really upsets me to see trash thrown at him. He does so much for everybody. There's nothing that he wouldn't do for anybody. Coming from the city myself and transplanting here to Brookings, I've learned a lot about small-town living, how quickly things get out of hand. And just want to voice that I think accusations cause more damage than they're worth. There's nothing to substantiate anything. I've never been misled by this man. And as Emma said, it's, it breaks my heart to see it happen. And I think we all owe it, not just to, you know, the people sitting in this room, to the commissioners here, and to Jay Tross and his family, is to give them the utmost of our support, quiet the negative talk, and seek facts. Let's see what's going on. Let's be fair with each other. Not really great at public speaking, but I thank you for the opportunity to do so. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Rodney.
Thank you, Rodney. Thank you.
Next is Yancy Rangel. You're going to want to take that out of there.
Alright, so I'm not the best at public speaking. So I'm going to, but I do want to voice some real. But I do want to voice some real concerns I have regarding the recall. I don't know how appropriate it is to have a sheriff's department or someone within the sheriff's department put out a recall for a public elected official. I don't know how citizens are supposed to be able to be confident in speaking out against that considering that they have authority within the county. I think that's a real concern. But besides that, I just want to speak on some of the things that I've seen people saying on Facebook regarding Jay and his personal interests. I've known you for seven years. You're the furthest thing away from personal interests. Been an incredible mentor to me. For those of you who don't know, he actually took me in at 18-years-old when I wasn't going to graduate high school. And I got to say, I would not be the man I am today if I had never met you. Try to hold it together here. I've seen you sacrifice so much time with your own family on behalf of the county. It's never personal with you, it's never for you. I don't even see you defending yourself in regards to all this slander. And you're still, you still have the back of the community. I just got to say, it was the best blessing in my life to meet you. Today, I wouldn't be the man I am without you. And genuinely, when I say this, when I'm about to make a bad decision, I think to myself, "What would Jay do?" You know, I don't talk to you about advice as much anymore, but it's because I've watched you. And you're way more than talk. You're all action. And I just wanted to say that, so thank you.
Next up is Andre Bay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah, Andre, you're going to want to grab that microphone so people can hear you. It's, yeah, there you go.
Commissioner Coker, it was a nice, you meet me out there with a handshake and a smile. Appreciate that. Just had a couple of questions for Jay and Pat going back to the May 20 meeting when I asked you about Ted and the lack of him being in the building. And you and Pat both said that was a rumor. You call that, right? Sure you do. And the tort claim, it brings that out in my public comment. And then that tort claim, it says, "You guys lied to me." And I believe the quote, I had it here, says, "They straight-up lied to people," and I have the email to prove it. So I'm just still here fact-finding, and I'm curious who lied to me? Is the liar in this tort claim, or is the liar's on the dais? That's all I ask.
You say that May 20?
May 20th meeting, I believe it was.
And you're talking about Director Fitzgerald being in the building?
Yes, I asked about him not being in the building.
And I said?
That was false.
It was false. So I will clear the record real quick for you.
Point of order, my three minutes. I wasn't done, Jay.
Okay, I apologize. I thought you were asking questions.
No, you asked me the question, and I clarified.
Thank you.
Okay, and then I want to know if you guys are aware that in the last four-plus months, Ms. Wagner has had law enforcement escort out of this building every night. And is the public aware of that? So, you know, I'd hate to work in that kind of an environment, so toxic, where the fear of retaliation, you have to have law enforcement on your side. And one more point, Lieutenant Crone did not sign a petition. That's where everybody's mistaken. Jeremy Crone, a citizen of Gold Beach, signed a petition. Thank you.
Okay. Next, Connie Hunter. Hello, Connie.
I'm going to take my phone a moment to come up. I came here today with no makeup on.
You're going to, Connie, can you, I apologize.
Very light-sensitive day for me, so it's hard for me to be here. But I wouldn't have missed it for the world. And the reason is, I not only trust both Patrick Hollinger and Jay Trost in ways that most people don't have opportunities to work with you like I've had to work with you. And if I could say, the single biggest piece of the puzzle in knowing both of you is the generosity of spirit. The generosity of spirit in the time you dedicate to this work, and this is not new news, you've been on callings, both of you, your whole lives. And as a mother who buried her only son, I would hope, as I look at you, I see what my son would have grown up to be. And I have said to Jay, even in, Commissioner Trost, in an email, that he was role-model material, and I feel the same way about Patrick Hollinger, and I feel the same way about Lynn Coker. And when a young man steps up here and says those words that he did, I can't even tell you how that makes me feel as a parent. So Curry County has been a place where we've had lots of divisions. People get gaslit. I got gaslit. You've gotten gaslit. You guys are getting gaslit now. The tables are turned. That's a moral injury. And I am so sorry that two committed people who are absolutely altruistic in their efforts in Curry County have to be gaslit. It's shocking to me. It's heartbreaking to me, but I can tell you one thing. I am so proud of the work that this Board of Commissioners is doing. You guys are cooking with gas, and the two-against-one dynamic that often unfolds at this Board of Commissioners, I don't see that happening. I see this collective body doing collective work with great minds, but also hearts and thought leadership. It's okay to understand operations. It's okay to know how things run and what needs to be improved operationally. But to have that policy savvy and that ability to say, "We're going to make changes, and we're going to pull people together in one of the most divisive situations," I applaud you, I respect you, and I'm humbled and honored to be here. And I have a little advice for people who don't always get to have the microphone. Once you have it in your hand, and they try and take it away from you, and they come from the right, you go like this. And if they come from the left, you go like that, and you get your point across. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you, Connie. Next, Amy Lindsay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'm Amy Lindsay. I am actually the wife of Don Lindsay, who works for Jay at The Fat Irish. And I'm speaking on his behalf as well as my own. I met Jay six years ago when he hired my husband to work as a cook for him. And my first impression of him was very straightforward. What you see is what you get. And you have always had my husband's back. I remember the first real test that I saw of your leadership was the Fat Irish's Black Friday. When COVID hit, and you had the... Sorry.
You're fine.
St. Patty's Day. Thank you, honey. Had it all set up. Everything is ready to go, all that food, all the, everything. And we had to close because of COVID. You never let that take you down. You supported your customers and your employees. You fought through that, and you had their back and our back then, and you continue to. And two and a half years ago, when I lost my son, you were right there and had my back and my husband's back, no matter what. And when you had our back, it wasn't just you. It was everybody that you lead because they take after you and how you look at things. You're transparent, you're honest, and you're giving. And you always think, "How are my choices going to affect everyone? What are my best choices for everyone, not just myself?" And if it hadn't been for you leading the way you did, I wouldn't have been able to say goodbye to my mother a month ago when she fell from two aneurysms. Everybody at The Fat Irish, including you, were there for me and for my husband, and were able to get down there to say goodbye to my mother. And for that, I will be eternally grateful. And my last thing I have to say, it's the most sneaky thing I have ever seen you do, is ask my husband to sneak you some bacon. And I don't know what husband wouldn't try to pull one over on their wife. So I think if that's the worst that you can do, you're doing pretty good.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you. Next up, Dave Houston.
Good evening. I don't follow all the particulars when it comes to this specific matter and Facebook and, you know, the allegations, but I do know Jay Trost. I've known him for a long time. As a fellow business owner, a landowner, a resident of Harbor, and a resident of this community, Jay walks the walk. He talks the talk. He stays in the trenches. He's an incredibly generous and community-minded man. I've always considered him one of the best mentors and friends that I've ever had. And, you know, everybody can come up here, you'll hear the same types of stories about Jay and his integrity and who he is, and they're all correct. The people that I do know in this room, the ones that work for him, the culture in his business doesn't happen in a vacuum and it doesn't happen by accident. The man is principled. He's got character. And I will put his integrity up against anybody at any time and not look back. Jay, I appreciate you for the community and what you do for all of us, my family included. You're a good man.
Thank you, Dave. Next is Bonnie L.
Hi, I'm Bonnie L. I live in Brookings. And for many years, I've had the opportunity to get to know Jay in his various roles as a nonprofit volunteer, a coach, a business owner, civic leader, and friend. He is one of the most generous, honest, and caring individuals and leaders I've met. Jay spent many years of his life caring for the most vulnerable, both personally by welcoming youth experiencing foster care into his heart and home, and professionally by serving at-risk youth in our local juvenile justice system. From serving on multiple nonprofit boards and the school board to volunteering as a basketball and Little League coach, Jay's tireless devotion to the betterment of our community and youth can be felt in nearly every corner. Wherever there is a need, it seems Jay is there, trying to help find a solution. Whether it's taking upon himself to fix broken basketball hoops on school playgrounds or spending countless hours volunteering on the ballfield to train up and rally dozens of young athletes and their families to state tournaments, I've observed him consistently seeking out opportunities to help others succeed, develop new skills, and reach their full potential. I love going out to eat at Fat Irish, not only because of the delicious food, but because of the friendly and familiar faces of Jay and Mary's amazing staff, many of whom have been there for multiple years because of how well they are treated and respected. In all of the various corners of our community where Jay leads, I've only ever observed him doing so with the utmost respect, intentionality, and integrity. Politics aside, Jay's honorable reputation, the community speaks for itself. He is constantly pouring into others and into our Curry communities at large. The information being shared in an attempt to defame his character is simply inconsistent with who I know Jay to be. Thank you, Jay, for your service to our youth, community, and county at large.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next is Erin Porter.
Thank you. I am Erin Porter. I am a Curry County resident and have been since 2010 now. So 15 years I've been here. I came here to work in behavioral health, and I've served in numerous roles in behavioral health for this county. During that time, I've worked with Jay on a number of projects. And I have not always agreed with him. And we've had some hot conversations, but they were always respectful. And Jay always tries to find the middle ground because at the end of the day, we're all trying to help each other get down the road a little further. So I see Jay do that day after day. And then I see things like this recall with its specious allegations that are inappropriate. A recall is a legal proceeding, and there is no legal basis for what is being stated at this time. And so I would encourage folks to look for the facts, look at each person's character, and figure out, is this a leader that you want in your community? Is this someone who has heard you even when you've disagreed with them? And I can tell you from experience, Jay has heard me even when I've disagreed with him.
Thank you, Erin. Next is Ken Olson.
Thank you. My name is Ken Olson. I'm a 42-year resident of Curry County. I've seen a lot of commissioners come, a lot of commissioners go. And I would like to address the current group of commissioners and the process for identifying, evaluating, and creating solutions to problems our county faces, which supports a lot of your people's support for our commissioners. I want you to know I appreciate your desire to look at our problems from a different perspective than we have in the past. Your stated desire is to create a functioning county government that is able to sustainably live within our limited county budget is a worthy goal, and I believe an attainable goal as long as we use dispassionate logic to assess accurate and relevant data to achieve desired outcomes. This process is vital to the success of any organization, public or private. This process should be conducted in the most transparent manner possible but within law. I appreciate your willingness to think differently on issues that affect the county. An example would be Commissioner Hollinger's exploration of taking a more active role in federal forest management, specifically near the interfaces between public and private property, hopefully providing additional income for our county budget and offer some additional protections for our neighbors closest to federal lands from fire. I'm not sure if the county will be successful, but this illustrates my point, the willingness to consider alternative approaches to solve problems. Thank you. A second approach to this differentiation and problem-solving from traditional public processes is the commissioners' thinking with respect to increasing the law enforcement presence on the Harbor bench, an issue that's very dear to me. There are four urban areas in our county, three incorporated cities and the Harbor bench. While all three of our cities face their own challenges and funding issues, Harbor is by far the largest unincorporated urban area in the county and is the responsibility of the government officials in this room. of the government officials in this room. I don't think it's an overstatement to declare that Harbor is deteriorating in front of our eyes. As a 30-year resident of Harbor, I can state with some confidence that unless something is done, Harbor will become an embarrassment to the county as a clear illustration of government failure to respond to the issues that plague the Harbor bench. The genesis of these problems certainly took root long before any of you took office. But unfortunately, they are coming to a head during your time on the BOC. And I appreciate you guys taking the effort to think differently about how that works. I have more to write here, but I just want to end by stating that I've been here a long time. I've seen a lot of county commissioners. And this particular group of people with the way you think, your honesty, your integrity, your willingness to take risks and expose yourself to some very nasty things is a character issue and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Georgia Cockerham. I'm a Curry County citizen from Brookings. These are comments, not opinions, but comments based upon commissioner statements. So I ask you to listen. Words have meaning. And I ask you to, uh, to take that into account. So I'm here to address Commissioner Hollinger's affirmation of his intent to defame the character of a Curry County Sheriff's Office Marine deputy and the absence of backbone held by the other commissioners to speak up against such a disgusting lack of public leadership. This attack began about 36 minutes into the April 15th BOC meeting when Commissioner Hollinger, without any factual evidence, accused the Marine deputy of submitting fraudulent reports to the Oregon State Marine Board. Commissioner Hollinger's use of the word fraudulent was confirmed when former Commissioner Alcorn referenced Mr. Hollinger's accusation, stating to the public, "He just said that he discovered the sheriff's office was submitting fraudulent information to the Marine Board." The definition of the word fraudulent is that something was done by deception, especially criminal deception. To act fraudulently requires intent to deceive by doing something dishonest and illegal. The damage from Commissioner Hollinger's false accusation didn't stop with defamation of character of a young Marine deputy. Mr. Alcorn made public the fact that Mr. Hollinger's accusation about the deputy was submitted to the Oregon Department of Justice. Furthermore, Mr. Alcorn stated that because of Commissioner Hollinger's accusations, the board pulled a grant application meant to help the sheriff's office jail. On July 2nd, during the public comment part of the BOC meeting, I spoke of three separate incidents in which Commissioner Hollinger falsely accused Curry County citizens and the need for him to be accountable by apologizing to those he harmed. During the commissioner updates of that same meeting, Commissioner Hollinger referenced my talk and stated that he did not believe he'd said anything false or reported anything wrong, seeming to imply that he intended to defame the character of those he falsely accused, including the Marine deputy. So where does this leave Curry County citizens? We have one commissioner who believes there's nothing wrong with making false character accusations and two other commissioners allowing this behavior to take place. False accusations and gross misjudgment by our commissioners can easily result in another expensive lawsuit paid for by this county's citizens. As reported in the Redwood Voice, the county is already paying for an investigation into a formal complaint against Curry County's Director of County Operations, Ted Fitzgerald. Rather than being careful with your actions and words and leading with integrity, the three of you seem to have no problem with behavior that endangers the very people you were elected to help. We need commissioners who each have sufficient intelligence to support their comments with research facts and the courage to require decent leadership skills from each other and county employees. Words have meaning. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. Next is Tiani Matani.
Hello, my name is Tiani Matani. I am a resident, 32 years of Brookings. And I am talking on behalf of Jay Tross. Let me get to my notes in one moment. Okay, so, good evening, I should have started off with. But, um, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to offer my sincere perspective on someone I've had the honor of working alongside and observing in service, Commissioner Jay. In recent days, I still feel like this thing is not on, but it's okay.
It's on.
In recent days, uh, there have been questions raised about Jay's judgment. And while scrutiny is a necessary part of public office, too, so too is fairness and content. Jay has consistently shown himself to be a leader guided by integrity, accountability, a genuine commitment to the people he serves. His decisions may not always please everyone, no leaders do. But what I have witnessed time and time again is that his choices are thoughtful, principled, and rooted in desire to do what's right, not what's easy. More than that, Jay is someone who will do or who will go the extra mile for you, whether you're a colleague, um, or simply someone in need. If Jay can help, he will. He shows, he listens, he follows through, and the kind of commitment is rare and it's real. And has approached his role as a commissioner with humility and purpose, never seeking credit, always seeking solutions. They're not just traits of a good commissioner, they are the traits of a good man. I speak not just on behalf of myself, but on behalf of many who have worked with Jay, been led by him, and obviously, we, it's all collective that we've been saying this. So, um, moving forward, his character is steady, his ethics are clear, and his commitment to the community has never wavered. In unnecessary times, we need to, we need these steady leaders who are willing to carry the weight of public responsibility with courage and, um, trying to think of the last word, um, conscience. So, thank you for being a kind leader and letting me speak today. And God bless.
Thanks, Tiani. Next is Abigail Adamitis.
What was that last name?
I, I butcher it every time.
We've heard yours said four different ways.
It's a day, yes.
You know, it's fun.
It's normal.
Well, I'm here because I just wanted to share, you know, that we've had the, my name is Abigail Adamitis and I'm a Brookings resident. We've had the pleasure of knowing Jay for over five years now, ever since our children started attending the same school. And in that time, we've come to see firsthand the kind of person he is, not just through his words, but through his actions. Jay is one of those people who steps up without being asked. Whether it's lending a hand, even giving me business advice as a small business owner, you've always been transparent, honest, even if you're telling me something that I might necessarily not want to hear. But you've always just looked out for the benefit of everyone around you. You want to uplift the community. You want to see everybody do the best that they can do. You know, you lead quietly, but powerfully and by example. One moment that stood out to me and was mentioned is that when a basketball hoop at the school was knocked down, no one asked you to fix it. No announcement was made, but the next thing we knew, there was a new basketball hoop up. And I was like, how did that happen? And lo and behold, it was you and your family. You see something that needs to be done and you take it upon yourself to take care of it, not for recognition, but because it is the right thing to do. That's just who Jay is. He's consistent, trustworthy, and grounded in a deep sense of responsibility to others. His integrity and strong moral compass make our community stronger. And I am so grateful to have you as one of our county commissioners. I think you're so trustworthy and you're the type of person that we should all want to have looking out for us because that's what you do. So, thanks.
Thank you, Abigail. Thank you. Next is Nicole Nguyen. Get Fit with Nick.
Hi, my name is Nicole Nguyen. I am owner of Fit with Nick and I also work for Jay at the Fat Irish. So I came here on his behalf to speak about, um, his character, his conduct as a business. Let me start from my, my paper first.
Yes.
Okay, so Jay Tross conducts his business with a rare blend of integrity, humility, and genuine care for the people around him. He leads with a strong moral compass, consistently prioritizing, uh, the well-being of his staff and the quality of the environment they work in over short-term profits. Jay doesn't just manage, he connects. He makes a conscious effort to acknowledge every member of his team, whether it's a simple thank you or a moment of recognition that makes you feel seen. In my years of working, I've never had a boss who took the time to do those things. And it's not just refreshing, it's transformative. His leadership style fosters loyalty, respect, and a sense of belonging that's hard to come by in most workplaces. What truly sets Jay apart is the willingness to put people before profit in ways that most business owners would never dare. I've never worked for a company that would voluntary shut down operations, lose revenue, just to prioritize a deep clean or host a team-building day we affectionately call Fat Camp. It's culture, investing in the team, and showing that the business is more than just numbers. Jay understands that a healthy, united staff creates a stronger, more resilient business in the long run. His actions speak louder than any mission statement. And they've left a lasting impression on everyone lucky enough to work with him. And, um, thank you all for your time. Trust me with your time.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Hi, Joy May from Port Orford. I'm commenting on the commissioner updates from the August 1st special meeting. In regard to Commissioner Coker's comments about building wind turbines along our coast, I found the following remark troubling, and I quote, "But you've probably heard the term 'deep state.' The 'deep state' is spelled B-O-E-M and N-O-A-A. BOM and NOAA are deep state enterprises," end quote. Deep state is a highly-charged partisan political term and its main appeal is rooted in distrust of government. I believe it's inappropriate for a county commissioner in a nonpartisan role to use that term to undermine NOAA, the organization that just warned all of us about a possible tsunami threat. Our fisher folk and firefighters' lives depend on NOAA's forecast. Listing all the ways NOAA is vital to coastal residents would take much longer than my allotted time. Hearing my county commissioner describe NOAA's work as shadowy prompts my next comment on the update presented by Commissioner Hollinger regarding, and I quote, "Our timber. We've made great strides with that," end quote. Specifically, after several past commissioner meetings where the public came out in force to voice their opposition to this plan and provided expert testimony explaining why it was not in the best interest of our county, Hollinger has continued his efforts and now expects to present a signed contract with the Forest Service and the Department of Agriculture within a month or two. This contract, as Hollinger states, will enable us to proceed with those timber sales. Commissioners Tross and Hollinger added that the Forest Service and the Department of Agriculture are very excited to be working with Curry County. And indeed, I'm sure they are excited. According to Hollinger, the regional director of the Pacific Northwest Region for the Forest Service is responsible for 25% of the timber harvest required under a presidential executive order and wants to meet that quota for her boss. So why not agree to a list of, or a lease of 80,000 to 100,000 acres of public forest land and have the county pay to meet that quota? The glitch in all of this is the fact that an executive order does not negate the law and stewardship programs must still follow the law. Is the county ready to take on the associated cost of this plan as well as the lawsuits that will inevitably arise? Will the county truly become sustainable on timber funds? Or will we lose our cherished public forest lands as we go bankrupt? And to the citizens listening to this meeting, before you allow your county to take on the management of your favorite fishing hole, take a look at what they did to the county lands across from Pacific High. I appreciate the research into a stable revenue, but I'm committed to the belief that this is not the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Next is Tabitha. Is Tabitha still here? Tabitha Rude?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Hi. You guys know I don't social media much, so I didn't know there'd be such a long line tonight. And I would have brought a snake. But I'd say my, I'd first applaud your ability to endure these meetings, jeez Louise. And I really, you guys know I don't like administrative bureaucracy, I just really want to get stuff done. So my comment is also on the new contract. I just, I'm concerned about the amount of public comment that was made about timber harvest and resource exploitation. What started as a timber contract then went into a wildfire crisis and is now back to a timber receipts, um, contract. And I just feel like there is not enough incorporation of the experience and expertise in planning for natural resources locally. I am a public servant. I am working really hard to bring money to this town. And I've written in Curry County as part of the grant, part of the grants that we've been getting. And I'm just really frustrated as a community member and as an organizer to not be having these discussions. So I'm asking, um, tonight for you guys to consider the development of the Natural Resource Committee that was discussed in February and has not moved. And asking for you to reach out for local expertise and input in this process. There are more pressing duties, I think, of your positions, frankly, you know, healthcare, housing, all the things facing Curry County, rather than focusing on potentially an issue where there's a lot more local expertise and consult on these issues moving forward. So I, I would like to just reiterate that there's a lot of local knowledge and resources for beneficial outcomes for sustainable recreation, forest products economies, and wildfire risk reduction. We've had the Oregon State Fire Marshal come today. The chiefs have meetings every week. I'd just like to see more engagement on those issues from this board. I have, there are other, other land use issues happening that I'd love to highlight for people, but we have a functioning natural resource community here of experts and I would love to see them prioritize as voices in this discussion over external contractors, especially in DC, that don't really know our, our local environment. So, that's all I wanted to say today.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll bring, I'm going to further clarify the contract and stuff after public comment and go through, um, all of that because a lot of the local expertise which you claim is part of this contract is in this contract.
Yes, and
Is there going to be an opportunity to, like, for the public to review this contract, given the amount of interest there is in this issue?
So, we won't get into a back and forth, but I think there will be some clarifying statements, like, because I believe, listening to statements, because I believe, listening to Ms. May and you, that there's some intertwining of the comments that made, where I was talking about an idea that I had had, presented, but that, that, that idea of the 80,000 to 100,000 acres is not, that's not the premise of the, it's a good neighbor sewer ship agreement.
Right.
Is, that's, that's what we are essentially seeking, is, and so, that's going to re-
We're favoring it for more stewardship, for-
That's going to require-
Which I would just love to be a part of, being that, you know, I feel like we've helped, the collaborative has helped broker the education necessary to make that deal happen and are therefore now just being cut out of the conversation. Where, and I did receive an email saying, you know, where the county doesn't want to work with the collaborative any longer based on some other stuff. And I have since not seen any engagement, even though Ted said that that was not the case, you know, to disregard it. But I, I do really think that people would like, if you want more transparency and less resistance to that plan, a stewardship contract is very different than some nebulous contract for 100,000 acres.
Right.
So, I'm just asking, as someone who brings people together in this collaborative setting, to be heard and for you guys to also want to work with those groups that are bringing resources for wildfire risk reduction already.
We'll, we'll address it further after public comments.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to have to watch that from home because I really need to eat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tabitha. And our last public speaker is Sherri Olds.
Sherri Olds from Brookings, Oregon. Probably the, nothing to do with anybody, everyone's so great here. Mine is getting into business on issues. First, I'd like to hear the explanation that Andre was talking about, that you went to respond to, and then you didn't get that chance to. I'd like to get that cleared up. Second, about the, I was here when the marine thing was presented, and that was very clearly just a factual email and a research that you are required to do in your position, and it was transparency, and I appreciate that. People keep saying online, I am like the feisty one online, because I don't like drama and I like everyone, I've been here since 77. So, I'm not new to this area or new to the people, I pretty much changed diapers, pretty much all the old police officers. You know, so, it's one of those situations where I can go back and forth, but Andre made a comment that Jeremy did this on private matter, not unofficial business. So, that allowed me to open this door to talk to you on private matter, using his name. As you said, we can't talk about somebody who's under government, whatever. So, in here, in short, while Oregon doesn't mandate specific legal grounds, the reasons for the recall must be clearly stated and supported by facts to move forward with the process. So, you can do what she, what your person in the office clerk said, she just stamped it, did whatever 200 words, made sure that it was all done. But you have to have facts to support it, or you cannot move forward. So, let me go over here, and I will read you what came from Jeremy to me. And I get past 5,000 emails, or comments. And he says, "I'm very long-winded." I am, I do not deny that, I case seven stories to get to my one point. And again, you've implied the recalls about topics of which it's not. I ask for evidence, I ask for facts to back up anything you have to state. And he said he had very few words, very limited time to put that on the recall. I says, "Okay, well, can you please supply that, since you're online and you're jabber-mouthing now?" And I, that's not going to be a personal attack on him. I mean, I'm going professionally here, okay? Because personally, I like all, everybody. But professionally, I, I want accountability. And he says, "Emails, dates, timelines, yes, they exist, however, I can't use them in this recall, because in order to access my county email or phone or records, I would have to be acting on official duties in county time, and that's against an election violation." Well, that tells me he can't provide his facts then. I'm not going to instruct him on how to do what his job is to do that. There are ways, but then again, you know, you're supposed to be highly intelligent in your position. And then you have Zane Canzal. I came in, but I started off-
I'm going to, you're going to, I'm going to ask you to gently try to come to a conclusion.
Okay. So, my, my thing is, well, maybe I have to come back to each, every, every meeting to go up one item after another. My thing is curiosity of the procedures of each department, the 30%, but everyone that's got complaints doesn't have, seem to have the proper answers on how things happened. And it's common sense to me, because I've, I've asked questions, you have answered every phone call, if you're driving. I don't know you guys, before I started working with you, I came in on behalf of the Sheriff's Department. I came in to get revenue for the Sheriff's Department. The transit tax did pass. Okay? And I'm doing other things, which I presented. I am not one-sided in any way, but I have been so impressed with you guys. My dad, years ago with the judge and the county commissioner, I mean, many, many, many years ago, okay? He's 84 now. And I told him I have never seen a better group of Board of Commissioners ever. Brad Alcorn was included when he was here. Okay? And so, I just want to say thank you, and I will bring one thing up at a time, but if you guys can answer anything, I would appreciate clarifications.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you, Sherri.
I, I apologize, there, there is one more public speaker, and I, her comment card got stuck behind another, so. All right, Athena, Athena Lyons.
All right. Last but not least here, Athena Lyons, Brookings. And I just, mine's going to be super short, just, just want to thank all of you. You each bring something to the table, and I appreciate all of you. I was very, very heartbroken when I read the recalls, because actually, they were just lies. And, and obviously, when you write something and you say they are truths and they are lies, there are consequences to that. So, my suggestion to whoever wrote them, which you know who you are, is to remove them, because the only reason you wouldn't is because of pride, and pride comes before fall, as we all know. There are terms that people use, deep state, I've heard the term scam, and I'm sure all of you have. If you ever go to your bank, it says, "Don't give someone your number, it's a scam." You call something, "It's a scam." You call social security, "Don't give them this number, it's a scam." It's a word, because a scam means someone's trying to screw you, okay? And take your stuff. So, deep state, you know, those kind of things just mean that someone is trying to take something of value from you and lie to do it. So, I appreciate, you guys, you have businesses, you don't have to do this. But you did, you stuck with it, with the windmills. We fought that for two, three years now, and you guys were on board to, and, and now it has stopped, for a while at least. The people on Main that I've been talking to about all of this, they're, they are, it's finally stopped there too. So, they're happy about that. So, no matter what goes on, I know I can call you, I can text you, I can email you something, and you always respond. And isn't that what we want? You're trying to, we have 42 districts, 42 districts in this, in this small little Curry County, and we all want to keep our districts. Well, it takes money. So, timber, any way we can make money, let's do it, because either that, or let's get rid of some of the districts. I can give you a few names of some I'd like to get rid of, but let's. So, anyway, if, if you want your districts, you're going to have to, you know, help them and stop fighting against something that's trying to help you. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Athena. Okay, and now we will move into Commissioner comments. And, and, you want to go first?
Yeah, I'll go first.
Okay.
I'll just, um, address the Oregon State Marine Board thing here real quick. It was claimed I don't have any evidence and that my claims against the deputy were fraudulent. And anyways, I do have the evidence of all that action. All of the commissioners, including previous Commissioner Brad Alcorn, as well as our legal counsel, have reviewed all of that evidence as well. And this was brought directly to me from the Oregon State Marine Board. We did follow up internally with several of the folks on those reports, and it was their claims and testimonies that prove it. So, just wanted to address that. So, timber, so, let me clarify our last meeting on timber. There is no federal land lease. Let me just make that very clear right now. That was an idea that was kicked around a while ago, and it sparked some conversation. And anyway, so, earlier in my, in my position here, you know, I brought an outline to the Forest Service and to the USDA, really kind of in order to get their attention. It got their attention, it got everybody's attention, to be honest with you. So, we're moving forward now with a contract with the USDA, with the US Forest Service. And anyways, the, the purpose of this agreement is to facilitate a cooperative, sustainable stewardship program throughout our federal forestlands. And, you know, we're, we're hoping that this, this contract accomplishes the following. To facilitate the Forest Service in sustainable timber harvest for whatever they dictate to us what they wish to have cut. To help generate revenue for Curry County as well as the Forest Service, and it's intended to support our economic development with, within Curry County. It's designed to support local Forest Service operations for their staffing as well as public road and federal road access needs. We will be coordinating with the Forest Service to support and enhance public land improvements through the development of projects set forth in our National Forest, excuse me, National Forest Schedule of Proposed Actions through the SOPA. Support sustainable land management and stewardship of public lands. To reduce wildfire risks through active management, habitat restoration, and invasive species mitigation. This contract also will go in compliance with the Executive Order 14255. And it'll provide an opportunity for Curry County to set the standard for many other counties in developing a new stewardship-type program and to meet proper public lands management in conjunction with our fellow state and federal entities. So, timber sales all will come from them, they'll dictate what they would, they wish to have done. They will manage all of the land as well, they will continue to do all of the NEPA as well and, and partner, and we will partner with them in helping facilitate anything that they need facilitated. We'll have an implementation of, of projects such as reforestation, thinning, wildfire mitigation, wetland, and habitat restoration, invasive species mitigation, as well as helping promote further stewardship projects to maximize the use of our public lands. Road stewardship as well, I don't know if you guys know, but we have thousands of miles of Forest Service road in our county. Most of it is, is in, is in need of getting repaired, because as it sits right now, if we do have a massive wildfire in some of our areas, there's, there's no access to get there for any of our local responders to set up and, and defend our, our forests. So, you know, we have reached out to other contractors as well who have maintained those roads in the past, and they're helping us also develop a, a Forest Service road stewardship plan so that we can be preventive and not reactive in our maintenance of those, those roads. So, all of the activities conducted within the areas will conform to Forest Service regulations and their best management practices, and they will comply with NEPA and endangered species requirements. The Forest Service will retain all supervision over all forest activities. The county will, you know, assist in submitting annual performance and compliance reports as well for our performance in, in helping with this program. The Forest Service will, will continue to reserve the right to inspect any and all activities at reasonable times. They will serve as the lead agency for all environmental compliance processes under federal law. And, let's see, the other part of this too is revenue distribution. And I kind of think, you know, this is really an important thing. The Forest, the Forest Service needs funds too, locally. And what better way to help fund them than to reinvest a lot of this revenue that will be generated as through this stewardship program, but back into our local district? So, you know, we, we want to be able to reinvest that back to the Forest Service for increasing their staffing levels in which they need here. For foresters, for those doing the surveys that are required under NEPA, other management and contractual personnel that they need as well to help facilitate. I mean, I mean, God, it's, it's just an endless supply of surveys and contracts and, and stuff that they have to put together in order to even do anything within, within the area. But we're also reinvesting into the wildfire mitigation and prevention, restoration efforts, and also education programs for it as well. And then also being able to reinvest a lot of these funds to the Forest Service for road construction and maintenance. I've been on, you know, a, a field trip with, with Forest Service where they downloaded everything that they need help with. And, you know, I listened to that, made all my notes, and I want to make sure that all of this gets incorporated into that contract as well, because they're the ones that we need to support in order for them to help support us locally. And anyway, so they, they receive only $200,000 a year for their road maintenance for Forest Service lands. That's, that's enough to, to broom and sweep just a couple of those roads once annually, let alone now we, we know that every year, the weather and storms wipe out those roads, wipe out those culverts, and now make it so that we're not able to get in there this time of year if a fire starts, to be able to knock a fire down. And that's, that's how this contract is coming together with them. They say, they see a need, we see a need, and it's going to, it's a great partnership. So, in speaking with them, this best fits within a good neighbor authority contract. The contract's going to be tailored a little bit to incorporate more of what I just spoke about, but that lays a pretty good foundational boundary of what we're going to be doing with them moving forward and what we want to accomplish. You know, there's, like I said, just to, to be clear, there's no clear cutting, there's no federal land lease, there's nothing like that. The Forest Service does want this, the Department of Agriculture does want this, and they're kind enough to want to partner with us to help our county as well. So, I applaud them for wanting to take that action with us, and I want to do everything that I can to help keep pushing that forward and to have that sustainable program here within the county and that relationship with our local agencies for many generations to come. And so that's, that's my clarification on that.
Thank you. And I think a lot of times I put Commissioner Hollinger in hot water when I start talking timber issues and it gets convoluted with what's really going on. So I, I apologize for that when it gets mistaken. Commissioner Hollinger, do you have any comments, updates?
Coker.
What did I say?
It's not that hard to tell us apart.
I am, yes, it is, that is, it's true.
The first thing I want to say is that I am humbled to the point of almost being overwhelmed by the expressions of faith and loyalty in the work that these men have brought to doing the right thing in our county. And it's been going on now for 18 months, 24 months. But then I say to myself, why, why do I think that's so special? Because that's what we're supposed to do. You deserve that. You deserve the stability, you deserve the transparency, you deserve the problem solving. And that brings me to part of the pain that I feel over the fact that we have this recall unfolding. And that is because that recall destabilizes us at its heart. It takes our, takes our eye off the game, off the ball. Now, because they're very passionate about making certain that they retain their positions because they are devoted to our county, I perceive, one of the jobs I've got as their partner is to support them so that they can keep their eye on the ball to the degree that one can when there's a fire burning at your feet. So then I turn to you, you, the voters. Let's work hard to maintain the stability. Let's maintain the strength of our focus on getting the right jobs done the right way and cover them while they continue to fight the good fight. If we don't, what do we lose? I'm going to share some things with you that I'm sure that the opposition to the BOC is very intent on doing. And it comes down to what will they stop in the form of good work? Work that's in progress now? What plug are they going to pull from the wall once they have others in charge of the energy and direction that this county takes? I know for sure they're going to stop the process for the forensic audit of the last four and a half to five years of our sources of revenue and the places that it went. Sources and expenditures. We have to look at that. There's far too many questions about how in the world do we find ourselves in a situation where we've melted away inexplicably from 42 million in reserves down to as low as 18? Now we're back up over 20? We have to have that understanding of the pathway of the money that's been taken. And is it important to us in the county? Of course it is. But it's also important to our taxing districts, our school boards, our, everything feeds off the revenue. And if we can't capture it correctly and deliver it correctly, we're sinking the ship just because we're inattentive. The process of the forensic audit will be stopped when these men are taken off the board. The legal efforts that are underway in order to assure that the sheriff, through his processes and procedures, is managing that organization according to Oregon state law that defines policies and procedures and practices. He won't talk to us, but he will get to talk. He can talk to us anytime he wants to. If he doesn't talk to us, he will be talking with others. That process will stop. That department will go back under the shades. There will not be the kind of transparency that makes the community healthy. The other thing they're going to stop is that they're going to stop the board's efforts to ensure that in our county that relies upon the direct relation, the direction from the board, what's going to stop is the focus on professionalizing how our leaders bring about adhering to county policies and practices. It's, it's not just annoying, it's scary the way we see how some of our organizations have made up out of whole cloth. I don't know where they get these ideas, but human resource policies and procedures that they perceive supersede what has been litigated, would be defined, debated, discussed, and litigated. They, they just walk away from it. So that process that we've undertaken to assure that every leader adheres to county policies is, is going to go away when these men are taken off the board. The opposition will do that. The other thing that's going to happen, for the last 18 months, and it hasn't happened in years, we've lived within our budget. Yay, team, absolutely. That process will be trash canned if these men are taken off this board. The other thing that's going to happen is the essential investments that we need to make in infrastructure, they will never, ever happen when these men leave the board. So my job is to make, my, my job, my job is to make sure that we have continuity and stability within this organization. But I know that Lynn is not up for that job on his own. It's going to take those of you here who respect, admire, and know, and it's going to take a lot of other people across the county to say, no. We want you to stop that recall because it is disruptive and it's intended to create the wrong kind of effects in our community. And I hope that you will join me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sheesh, he's a hard one to follow, this guy. I just, I, I, I. The incredible amount of support that is poured in this week and today. It has been humbling, it has been inspiring. It's very difficult to put into words when you hear testimonies that we heard, that I heard today that really reaches the heart. And I, I, I can't thank everyone enough for those kind words and every heartfelt thought that you shared today. There was one, there was one comment that was made this weekend that hit me a little different in a, in a, in a wrong way. And I want to take a moment to, to talk about that. And this individual said, we're sitting ducks here. I like our sheriff, and we also like our commissioners. Why do we feel the need that we have to choose? And this, this echoed, this echoed what a person in the county had mentioned as well last week to me. And they received a call from the sheriff telling them that they needed to choose which side they planned to stand with. And I told that individual that they shouldn't feel the need to choose sides. We are all on Team Curry. And the reality is, no one should feel that they need to choose in that manner. This shouldn't be about picking teams. It's about how you want the county to be ran. Do you want us to explore alternative methods to maximize the service delivery that we can provide with the funds that we have? Do you want us to do so with data that drives that decision making? Or do you want a BOC that's replaced with individuals that will operate in a manner that doesn't make decisions in that way? That will not ask departments to provide data and explain service levels related to funding? Work, please. And I, I think this is the, this is the key component. Please, please, work to make it about the issues. And I understand, that's easier said than done. There are some big personalities at play here. But what I have found is that if people can't debate their points, they begin to attack the person. And that isn't healthy for any community, especially a small and rural one like ours. Because the reality is, at the end of this, and it will end, we, we still need to be a strong community. We still have to see each other in the grocery store. We still have kids that go to school together. You know, we, we still need to be good neighbors. And we still have to unite for, you know, to support foundations and causes and like what Brett Curtis was talking about earlier today. In a culture that's already pretty divided, let's not allow that to happen to us. We have to be Curry strong to move forward. And that's, that's, that's my statement on, on that. And thank you so much for all of the heartfelt comments. And I, I can't explain how much that means to, to me and, and, and my family. So thank you.
Now, that is it for Commissioner comments. Now, for those of you who want to stick around for the remainder of the meeting, you're more than welcome to do so. It is 8:21, and I know a lot of you have a long ways to drive. So if you would like to exit, stage left, you're more than welcome. I will, I will ask, can we take a three-minute break so I can use the restroom?
Well, and I just, before we do that too, I just, I just want to, as so everybody knows on the agenda, there is still a section where it's Commissioner updates. There are updates on, on other current matters going on in the, in the county now that'll be addressed also, so.
Yes. Okay, Natasha, let's take a three-minute break. Let everyone kind of get going if they need to and use the restroom. Okay, thank you. All right, we are now back. Appreciate the break. We are going to move into consent agenda. If I could have a motion?
Well, actually, I'd like to just address one real quick. Okay, just a quick statement. It's regarding consent agenda item D. The purchase, approved the purchase of a new flatbed for the road department. Last month, the road department invited me to go along with them for a morning to go do chip seal with them, just to go see their operation. It's an operation they're very proud of, and they invited me to come with them. And I, I took that as a great opportunity to go, go let them brag about themselves and show me how good they and show me how good they do, and, and it was really awesome. But during that, um, you know, I asked them, I said, "What can I do to help you guys? Is there anything you can do to help make things safer?"
And they said, "Grab a shovel." No?
Uh, no. Um, there were a couple of equipment items that, that needed replaced. One of them being this, uh, flatbed trailer. The one that they currently were, were operating had some structural issues, and they were concerned about it. And, um, and another is regarding a loader. Anyway, so I took that back to our Director of County Operations, made him aware that I'm not okay with our employees working or using equipment that is unsafe to their well-being. So, here we are. We are able to now, uh, purchase a new flatbed for them. We'll dispose of the other one. I know that'll make them happy. So if anybody from the road department's listening to this meeting, I've listened, one of the items has got addressed for you. And, uh, Director of Operations Fitzgerald and I are currently working on the loader situation for the broom attachment. And, uh, we're going to work on getting that for those guys as well. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? I'll call for the question. Commissioner Coker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hollinger?
Yes.
And I as well. Uh, we have no discussion action items tonight. Public safety update, I do not see anybody here to assist with that. Director of County Operations update, uh, our Director of County Operations is currently on vacation. And so, uh, but I did have some updates for that, that he, he had passed along. So he wanted, he wanted everybody to know that the, the applications for all of the new positions have been coming in, and interviews have been getting set up. So that's an exciting time. You know, we, adding, adding resources to this infrastructure, to this, um, process is, is vital. And getting the right people in is also, I mean, it's just as important, right? It is important. So we're getting a lot of, a lot of applications, and that was a, that was a big plus. The, we've been interviewing forensic audit organizations for an RFP. We, we have interviewed three different agencies. We are following up with two more and a follow-up with one of the agencies we've already met with. So I wanted to make sure that you were updated on that as well. We hopefully will have some kind of a proposal to move forward with by the end of the month. I don't know if we will have it in time for the next meeting, but we, we will have it in, if necessary, I may call a, a, a special meeting to consider what that may look like so that we can get the ball moving forward. And that was the, the majority of the updates regarding our Director of County Operations. I do want to, um, provide an update that you may have or may not have already seen. There was a press release that was, uh, released earlier today. The State Bar dismisses Sheriff Ward's complaint about County Council. Quote, "Because we find no professional misconduct, we will take no further action on this matter." The Oregon State Bar said on July third, 2025, in a letter to Sheriff Ward and related parties. The State Board, the State Bar noted that Ward did not request a review of the decision, which is final under Bar Rule of Procedure 2.5. I'm going to provide a little bit of background on this. Just, I'll read the press release. Background on this is Curry County, um, on September fourth of 2024, Sheriff John Ward sent a letter to the Oregon State Bar accusing County Council Ted Fitzgerald of misconduct. Ward claimed that Fitzgerald had initiated a vendetta against the sheriff fueled by personal animosity, citing Fitzgerald's request for the sheriff to provide key data about county law enforcement operations. In this letter, the Oregon State Bar Association, Ward claimed Fitzgerald had accused me of wrongdoing without specifics. Emails Ward released between himself and Fitzgerald showed that the county council was asking the sheriff and his office for information concerning the county's K-9 program, the sheriff's overall staffing plan under the current budget, and the record of the responses and calls for law enforcement service in Curry County during the last two weeks of July in 2024. Ward also claimed in his letter that the State Bar, that because Fitzgerald had been temporarily appointed by the County Board of Commissioners to lead certain other county administrative operations during an ongoing reorganization, this constituted as a conflict of interest. The State Bar in its recent letter also noted that there was no evidence that Fitzgerald's action in his various roles while serving as County Council constitute a conflict of interest. It appears that Fitzgerald, this is quote, "It appears that Fitzgerald was asked by Ward's office for certain information in his role as County Council, but that does not create a conflict of interest," the State Bar's representative said. So I just wanted to provide clarification to an ongoing, uh, kind of situation that has been hovering over us since September fourth of 2024. And it's, it's good to finally have some resolution and move forward from that.
Absolutely.
Next up is Commissioner Updates. And, um, I will start. I'm, I got, I got the A position today, so, um, I want to talk, Joy's here. I want to talk timber. And I, in, in particular, I want to talk about timber receipts and O and C revenue. So this year, we received $944,000 in O and C funds. That $944,000 allowed us to continue to move forward with our current staffing that covered our COLA and rollup costs annually on our employees. That's, that's covered it almost exactly. We received $524,000 in timber, in federal timber receipts. That's different from O and C.
And to clarify, to clarify that, there is some O and C land within the Forest Service land, and so that's where that money would, would be coming from.
No, not really. Oh. It's a little bit different. So, so, so Forest Service land is managed by Department of Ag. BLM manages O and C lands. But the Forest Service does do work in their lands, and they do offer, um, they do offer timber contracts, and we do receive a portion of that, 25%. And that was our 25%. So that's kind of how that rolls out. Here's the thing. Um, in the, in the, in the reconciliation bill that was just approved at the, at the federal level, there's a clause in there that all timber receipts will go to the federal treasury. So what that means is, we have to, we have to get that language adjusted. That puts all of our timber dependent counties in a position where we would essentially, if it stays as is, status quo, not receive, we would not receive any timber dollars next year, which will put us in another deficit. Now, I, oh, the tim, I would, I will say that the timber counties are confident that we will get that, like, that, that, we will get that corrected by the next fiscal year. But as it sits right now, we have to plan with the idea that we won't receive it. Because as it sits right now, the federal timber receipts, O and, O and C, and the Forest Service lands will go to the federal treasury. So, um, this is the number one topic for Owen, for the O and C committee. And we are, we are working to educate all of the lawmakers in Washington about how this is going to affect all of the O and C counties. But, and, and that's why we truly believe, we truly believe with, with certainty that we will get this, we will get this corrected by next fiscal year. We believe the current administration will assist us in getting this corrected by the next fiscal year. But I wanted to update everybody on that because that is not something we have been talking about. But it is something that we need to be prepared for. The, the other thing I wanted to update everybody on is the status of our, our declaratory judgment. Now, as you know, we filed for a declaratory judgment on a board order that was, um, that was put in place, I believe, back in January, that identified the roles and responsibilities between the sheriff, clarified roles and responsibilities between the sheriff and the BOC. Items such as who has authority to create, or who has authority to sign contracts on the behalf of the county. Count, where does, who, who retains the authority over county property in terms of its assets in disposing of them or attaining them? Right, those were the questions kind of being posed amongst many others. So we have been in this process for quite a long time. Discovery was not coming forth with. We did file a motion to compel for discovery in July. That motion was awarded, along with the fees, the, the legal fees associated with discovery were awarded as well. And so, um, I will say that the case that is moving forward, and I believe that depositions for the sheriff are set on, for August 12th, which is next week. So that case, that we will be getting some resolution so that we can finally get this conversation over with and get to business and move forward. So I wanted to give both of you an update on that because I know that I worked primarily with the attorney on that particular case, and we don't have time to discuss those. So those are my comments.
I have a question about the, uh, the fees that were paid. So the proceedings this last month, in essence, the sheriff lost his argument. And in so doing, owed the county fees for the work that we did to try to substantiate our case in that discussion?
Well, it was the fees, it was the fees, the attorney fees that were related to the procuring of discovery.
Correct.
The, that's what, uh, was awarded for the, to, for the sheriff to have to pay.
Correct. And, and the argument over this, over discovery was, we said that you had to do discovery with us, and he was saying, "No, I don't have to do discovery with you."
Not necessarily. They, they just, there was not a willingness on their part to provide discovery. So it was like a, more of a dragging of feet. Yes, and so we had to, we had to file for a motion to compel them so that we could move forward with depositions.
And because they were slow rolling, then that caused us to spend more money. And they paid for it? The sheriff paid for it? Who paid for the, the slow rolling, the consequences?
Yes, the sheriff.
Okay. Does that come out of his budget, or does it come out of his pocket?
That I, I can't, I don't know. I don't know. I have, I, that, uh, that's beyond my scope.
So it'd be, I think it'd be worthwhile to find out if that's, if we're dinging the county.
No, no, it's not, it wouldn't, it's not being paid on behalf of the county. The county's not paying for those fees.
Through him or through us? You don't know that yet.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's, that's a clar, yeah, I need clarification, but thank you. I, I will fi, I will follow up.
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile.
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, uh, next up is Commissioner Coker.
All right, easy, easy peasy. Uh, last week I had got to, I was able to talk about several highlights of things that were unfolding. And since then, I've been able to loop back in relative to the aspirations we have to be able to do development on some of our properties. And I'd pledged that I was going to be reaching out to some housing, uh, housing authorities and, uh, trusts in order to understand the right way to get this done and such, and have had, uh, some interviews done. The, uh, the one that was fun today was actually with the Coos-Curry Housing Authority that really doesn't do much, though they finally got a project here in Curry County. But had an interesting conversation with them and, and additional contacts as a result of that effort. And I'm looking forward to having the Coos-Curry Housing Authority down here visiting with us and talking about more regarding what they're doing over here just behind Barnacle Bistro, that little strip mall there, two-story strip mall there.
You know, can I jump on that topic?
Absolutely.
So I'm the, I'm the designated person representing the county on the Coos, on the Coos-Curry Housing Devi, but that's your background. Like that, that development portion is your.
Can I just get myself in trouble?
Well, I'm just saying, if that, I mean, I, hey, I'm all about best people in the best seats to move us forward. And, you know, I, I, I don't sit, I don't go to join things to just join them. If I'm not adding as much value as somebody else, I would rather somebody else be sitting in that seat. And this is what's, an instance, I believe, where this is someone, this is your bailiwick. This is truly your field of study. And you would obviously provide way more functionality in that role than I would. So is it something you would be interested in? And if not, it's fine, it's fine. I just think that I, I don't, I want to, I want to be able to sidestep if there's better people to do the job.
I would be pleased to support the group that way.
Okay.
And thank you for even bringing it up. I hadn't made the connection that we have you there, so thanks.
Yeah.
Appreciate the opportunity. Okay, well.
You got any more? You got any more?
Well, the other point I wanted to mention was, we were talking a bit of, some about the, uh, the United States Navy and the sea cadets and the, the fact that we have such a great aquatic system here in the county through, uh, through Luke and his team. And I just wanted to mention to everybody that they are doing their final week this week. Tomorrow is Thursday, and they're going to be in the water doing some really significant endurance trials, uh, great skills. And if anybody was able to ever hear you talk about your daughter and their experience doing that particular course, you would be very thirsty to go out there and watch what's happening. So I've, I've actually been out there the last couple of days just so that I had some sense of what these kids were going to go through. And I would encourage, if you haven't been there, go to Harris Beach, enjoy the day, and watch those kids do heart-stopping kinds of things. It is just amazing what they go through in order to get those credentials.
The, you, so.
Sixty of them out there. This is not a dozen, this is sixty kids down there.
Yeah, you, you, you have to, you have to go to the, what they call the Iron Challenge, and it's the final test of the week for those kids. And it is, I, I believe that that may have fundamentally changed my daughter in her, in her grit. She was, she was the smallest one. First of all, it's not any, it's not an easy challenge. It's a half a mile run down the beach, back. Then you swim out almost a quarter mile around a buoy. You come in the, in the ocean, you come out, you grab a surfboard. Then you have to take the surfboard out like you're on a rescue, pass the quarter mile, come back. These kids were exhausted. They, some, I mean, you could see that some of them didn't know if they had it in them, but when they did, and when they found it, it changed the gear in, in their, it changed them. It, there was a gear that they found that they didn't know. And watching Luke motivate and inspire those kids the whole time was, it was, that was what it was all about. And I, yes, it was fantastic.
It's, it's going every day this week, so tomorrow is an opportunity, and Friday, I think, is their last day.
Yeah, I, I believe it's around Friday at noon is when they do their Iron Challenge. And so it's, it is one of the best things you'll see these kids do all year long. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank Luke. Thank Luke's team. Luke has.
And Declan.
Yeah, Declan, yeah. He has built a really great team. I mean, you've got sixty kids out there in three-to-five-foot waves. You've got to have some eagle eyes, really top professionals out there herding the cats.
Yeah.
It, it gets scary.
Yeah. Commissioner Hollinger?
All right.
You are in the C position.
Sounds good. Well, uh, I will start with just a public service announcement. We received. We received this from our Curry County Juvenile Department and our Curry County Prevention Department. And, um, there is an event that's going to be here, uh, in our community. The date is going to be September 9th. It's going to be from 1:30 PM to 3:30 PM at the Gold Beach High School Gymnasium. And it's, uh, and it's tall cop. It's called tall cop. Um, and the gentleman is Jermaine Galloway. And the name of the program is called High in Plain Sight. And I'm just, I'm just reading directly from the flyer here. And it says tall cop is a national speaker on drugs and alcohol. And it quotes by saying, "I've seen the ever-evolving drug culture trends sweep across, across our country. For many people, it's hard to keep up with these trends and especially to understand what they all mean. Unless you understand the culture, you won't see it at all. All over our nation, communities struggle to deal with underage drinking and drug usage. What can we do about these issues? Are we going, are we just going to meet up and quote, roundtable them every month? Or are we going to get out there and do something to fix the problems?" So he's, it says here, "I'll give you the tools to reduce, prevent, or stop drug and alcohol abuse in your community. And remember, you can't stop what you don't know." And again, uh, it's free to register for this event. There will be flyers around. You can also reach out to our juvenile department as well as our, uh, prevention department. And again, it's going to be held September 9th at the Gold Beach High School Gymnasium from 1:30 PM to 3:30 PM. So I hope everybody can attend that. It'll be a great event for us, uh, here locally. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention as well, um, last night, my family and I, we attended National Night Out down in Brookings. Uh, National Night Out is a, uh, a nationwide public safety, um, event where a lot of our local first responders show up there with their equipment and, um, you know, so fire trucks, police vehicles, ambulances, boats, um, et cetera. And they're all there to meet with the community, uh, let the kids crawl all over their equipment and, um, educate them as, as far as, you know, what they do and what their roles are and how they support our community. And I just want to say that, um, um, it was facilitated by Officer Dominguez. She's a, um, a community resource officer for Brookings Police Department. I spoke with, uh, Chief McCray yesterday and he's the one who told me that she was really motivated to spearhead this event and, and bring it to light. She did a fantastic job. It's going to move forward with being an annual event. And, uh, again, I, I, I thank all of our first responders, all of our law enforcement firemen, uh, first responders, um, coast guard, uh, everybody that was there. That was, it was great. And, uh, I know my, my kids are already looking forward to the event next year. So good job. And, uh, lastly, I, I guess I, I prepared a statement for tonight and, uh, I forgot to read the statement during commissioner comments, but that's all right. I just kind of save it for the end. But, um, so I'll just, I'll read my statement. It says, so while the right to question government, while the right to question government is fundamental in our democracy, it must be exercised with honesty and integrity, not through false and defamatory statements intended to mislead the public and damage reputation and action. Let me be clear that allegations being circulated by a small group of people are categorically false, malicious, and politically motivated. These statements are not only a personal attack on myself and my colleagues, but they are also an intentional obstruction to the integrity of public service and the voters who elected us to do a job that we all take seriously every single day. As your county commissioners, we have remained focused on delivering responsible governance, advocating for fiscal accountability, protecting and improving public safety, and restoring trust and transparency in our local government. We will not be distracted or deterred by efforts rooted in false accusations, misinformation, or personal grievances. We will not tolerate slander, defamation, or the use of outright lies to manipulate public opinion. With that being said, going forward, we will take legal action as necessary against those to prevent this type of behavior from continuing and to protect those that wish to serve honestly in our local government in the future. We have full confidence that the truth will prevail and we will remain committed to accountability, transparency, facts, and serving the people of Curry County with integrity and honesty. Thank you to the many community members who continue to support our principled leadership over petty political theater. We will continue to work for the best interests of our county, regardless of the noise from those who seek to divide, deceive, and prevent us from bringing you the accountability, transparency, and action you all deserve. And I'd come across a, a great quote. I like quotes. That's what I like. I like to repeat them, keep them relevant. So this, uh, this is a quote I came across from Charles Darwin. "It is not the strongest of the species that survive, nor the most intelligent, but the one most responsive to change." And I think that's a very fitting quote for our vision and what we're doing here as commissioners.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Commissioner Hollinger. Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, then we will adjourn this meeting at 8:57. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.